Good evening. Today is Monday, November 20th, 2017. We're here for the purpose of the Committee of the Hall. It is 8:28. We already did the pledge. We don't normally do it twice in one night.
We do not.
So we're gonna, we're gonna mark that one right off the list. Roll call, please. Clerk Spencer.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Alums. Bram.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Conquist absent. Kennedy.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. We are officially in the Committee of the Hall. Any announcements? If you know, we'll go on to public comment. Clerk Spencer, do we have any public comments? Anybody sign up for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, no one signed in.
Anyone in the audience wish to address the council at this time, please raise your hand. Who's not on the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to business for the council. Review of fiscal year 2018 budget. Just real quick, some timing, conversation. So, God willing, we will get done. We will finish at least what's on the list tonight. Visitors and tourism, all the way down to trust and agency funds. If we do that, I still want to keep to my 10 o'clock cutoff time, but if we do that, next Monday, the 27th, which is committee meeting, but we would still do Committee of the Hall, and I've asked city manager, barring any crazy requests tonight, he says that the circle back list with answers would be available for us on that evening. So the hope is we'll get through the remainder of the budget tonight. Any circle backs will be added to what staff has already been working on, and we will have a, hopefully, a final meeting to go over circle backs and any other questions on the 27th, which would allow us to put the budget forward for full approval by the city council on Monday, the 4th. Certainly, we have a couple of weeks of backup on the 11th or the 18th, if need be. But let's try to stick with the optimistic schedule I laid out. City manager.
Thank you. Just for the record, I don't think I used the word crazy.
Did I say crazy?
Yeah, just want the council to know it.
I didn't hear it.
Thank you. So we ended last meeting with Public Works, and we reshuffled just a couple of things. We'd like to get through visitor and tourism first, and then continue on with Public Works after that.
Okay.
So you can turn your budget books to page 165, and I will turn the microphone over to Assistant Manager, Kopp.
Great.
Yeah, the Explore Elmires campaign continues to support the mission of driving economic growth and quality of life to residents through tourism and destination marketing. The campaign includes Explore Elmires Express Free Trolley Service and informative website and social media pages. This year, we had a record number of 18,745 riders, offering about 12,000 from last year on the trolley. Our Communication Manager leads a monthly meeting with the Explore Elmires Advisory Group. This group is made up of all of our community partners, including the college, the park district, different business associations, the hotels, and other civic organizations. They meet monthly to discuss different events and activities and work to discover partnership opportunities. We feel the success of the Explore Elmires marketing campaign is credit to a lot of the city promotional events and efforts, but most importantly, the cooperation, collaboration, and support of our community partners. In maintaining a relationship with the hotel staff and ensuring hotel guests are well informed on community events and business establishments and others will focus, will be a focus of Explore Elmires Advisory Group next year, and we're in the midst right now of developing a visitor's guide that's going to be placed in all hotel rooms, metro station, museums, and city hall. Looking at the budget, line item 3098, other services, that's all trolley. That includes all the trolley budget for the trolley, as well as all the marketing. This year, we're still budgeting for the 16-year, 16-month program. With the opportunity, for some of the input we got back from a bunch of riders was maybe have a go through September, but as of right now, we're budgeted for the 16 weeks and the marketing and the other special night days that we had last time, like the St. Patrick's Day Parade, Memorial Day Parade, the holiday trolley in December, Art in the Park, and the college orientation. Line item 6007, I just want to make a correction on that. That's the holiday decorations in which we reimburse the business associations for someone who are decorating, and that should, that in the past was $24,000. And 16 and 17, as we worked through the process of subsidizing city center, we did increase up $18,000. But just recently, the committee again approved that subsidy for city center, but did not include extra money to decorating. It was just a $75,000 subsidy. So those, line item 6007 for 18 and 19 should be at $24,000, not $42,000.
Could you say that again, Mr. Kopp?
Line item 6007 should be $24,000 for 18 and 19, not $42,000. And then 6098, other expenses, that is $75,000 for the city center subsidy, and $30,000 earmarked for American Legion. And any questions?
That would, just repeat that last part. That's under 6098?
6098 is $75,000 for city center subsidy and $30,000 for American Legion grant.
Is that the line that the American Legion has been in?
Correct.
Anything else, Mr. Kopp?
That is all.
Alderman Plomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to do a better job this year of tying the expenditures to their funding source. So I'm, even though we're on 165, I'm looking at page 93, the municipal hotel tax, 00-00. And for 2018, it's projected 455,000. I just would like to know if, if that is all being allocated for the 2018 projected budget? Or are there other funding sources for what we see on the, on page 165?
So Alderman Plomsky, on 93, the very top line item, 00-00, that's what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. And your question is?
I would like confirmation. I'd like to know that if all the budget line items on page 165.
Roughly the same, right? 450,000, 455,000. Is it all dedicated, or is there other sources in there?
Are there other sources?
Okay, good question.
The normal policy has been for the hotel motel tax is 50% of it for visitor and tourism, which we credit towards the museum, and 50%, for the general fund. So most of this is probably general fund.
So half of the 455 that's projected covers half of, so half of that, so 227,000-ish is applied to this 449, and the remainder comes out of the general?
Well, I mean, that's what, it's really what we do with the hotel motel taxes. Half of it we credit towards visitor and tourism, and we've always credited that towards part of the museum funding. The other half just goes into the general fund. So you could, so you could call this half of it going to visitor and tourism, and these are all tourism $200, but most of this is funded through just general fund dollars.
Okay. Alderman Levin.
Two questions on the same line, the 6098. $105,000 is projected to end and go to 75 in 2019. Is, was there, was there a two-year, so I assume that both 105 is American Legion funding?
Thirty, 30,000 of yes.
Okay. And so when we put it in the budget, does that mean it, it's automatically funded, or does this go through committee?
It goes through committee.
All right. And the 75 that's left afterwards is, that's just the city center granted would be left over at the same level?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman York, you have a question?
No, but I'd just like to follow up on Alderman Levin's comments. I mean-
You have a comment, Alderman York?
Yes.
Great.
That 75 goes through this committee, and as has been stated in our report, we're hoping that EAVs, when the properties come on, you know, honestly, I'm hoping that number goes down below 75. It's kind of a placeholder number. But we're anticipating that with the Elmires 255 project being probably fully online at some point in time next year, and some other projects that are new developments, that number should go down.
I want to add to that, because if you look back at that line item back to 216, we're at 50,000. Was that? And it was nothing before then. The incremental, so I believe the Legion is in 2016 actual and 2017 estimated, right? And then it's also in 18. The part that goes to city center, that's a new commitment from us? Is that corresponding with the expiration of their one SSA? So we made a commitment to add how much to their?
75,000.
It was zero. I mean, I know we gave them other stuff, but that 75,000 is a new commitment as of last year?
Correct. Well, actually, it's funded this year and funded next year, so.
Oh, this year, this year, yeah.
16 and 17, yeah, right, correct.
Okay. Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Alderman Levin actually touched on some of my questions, and yourself as well, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm looking at, I think it was last year and this year, we are putting up or paying for holiday decorations and city center. I don't see that added anywhere in these budget line items, since we're saying that there's no increase in 60-07, and that the funds for 60-98, again on page 165, haven't changed. Where are the added expenses being displayed for the Christmas or whatever, holiday decorations that we are now doing in city center compared to city center paying for those in past years?
That's, that's part of the 75,000 subsidy to city center.
That's what 60-07 was, holiday decorations.
Well, that's, that's been in the budget as far as far back. It's always like that. It's for, not just for city center, it's for other business associations that look for funding to help do Christmas decorations. So city center has gotten that funding for a long time. I don't probably, yeah.
The question is?
But total portions, what we did is we raised it in 2016. Was it 2016, 20, yeah, when the decorations didn't happen, right? That one year?
Didn't happen on time.
Didn't happen on time. It happened to a limited basis. We stepped in, and we increased that line item then up to the 40,000, as you see in 2016, to help offset those costs. And then in 2016, yes, in 2016, I guess would have been, we upped that number to offset the costs to help put those lights in at the last, on time, as the mayor said. But, and then we also get in the subsidy. We're still working through that process, how it would work. So after the first year, we realized that, talking to them with their EAV, what their budget was, that they didn't need the 75,000 plus the extra $18,000. It was just the $75,000. So that line item 6007 is being reduced by $18,000. Getting 75,000. So in the past year, they actually got 75,000 plus the increased $18,000 for holiday decorations.
But next year, we're projecting to?
Just the 75,000.
Okay. Makes sense, Alderman Bram?
So if I may, to make sure I'm clear, the 75,000 that's in 60-98 out of the 105,000, part of that 75,000 will be the expenses for the, whatever, the increase in holiday decorations for city center. The other 24,000 on 60-07 is just what we've done for multiple organizations throughout the city when it comes to holiday decorations. Is that?
That's, that's correct. They'll, they'll continue to get the money that they have gotten to pass. The majority of that does go to city center, but it also goes to other business associations.
Could I, Mr. Mayor, just ask for this to be a circle back, so I can? Sure. Dig into it a little more.
What's the circle back?
Circle back is 60-07.
And 6098.
It's a little confusing. The year that they were late, we increased the subsidy for the lights. Extended that subsidy for one year, are not extending it to next year, and their SSA expired. So we gave them an additional 75,000 in funding, which is projected for next year, but depending on EVA, that might number, might, number may be even smaller. Alderman York.
Thank you. This is definitely a confusing issue. So I just wanted to throw something out there that everybody really needs to think about, too, is part of the justification for the helping them fund the holiday lighting is the fact that there are trees and things that need to be decorated that are in front of city-owned properties and in front of non-tax-producing properties. So, you know, there could be a case made for some of the $75,000 that's being allotted to city center to actually be up in the $24,000 line item, because it's something that's going to go on for a long time, because there's no tax revenue-producing things there to fund the holiday lighting in front of the parking decks and in front of the city-owned properties. So that's part of the justification of it. So it really is confusing, but maybe there's a better way to reconcile it or, you know, put it into the budget.
We'll talk about it on the circle back. Any other comments? Okay, great. Visitor and tourism completed?
Thank you, Mike. Well, Howard's coming up. We'll turn to page 167, interfund transfers.
So on page 167, interfund transfers, the only thing that's budgeted in 2018 is the transfer from the general fund to the stormwater fund, and that's for the property buyout program. We have a million six estimated in 17. Any of the funds that are left over from that, we would plan on doing a carryover to add to the $500,000.
So any property we purchased between now and the end of the year comes out of that 1.6? Roll whatever's left into the 500,000. That's what we have for property buyouts. That's our property buyout bucket for the next year.
Correct.
Okay. Questions? Alderman Bram?
Have we spent any of that 1.6 to date?
To date, actually.
To date, all right.
Well, not officially yet, until we're closing, but. Other than, other than the one that was on the agenda to date?
No, we have not. So we carried over a million one the year before, added it to the 500, and that's the million six that's in there. To answer your question, no.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, oh, sorry. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're going to spend some of that money, so we'll have, you know, around 1.6 going into next year. Is there anything that prevents us from moving that money other places for stormwater projects? Or does it always have to be used for buyouts?
That's a policy of the council. Whatever the council desires to do, when we set this aside, I thought we were pretty specific that we were going to use it for property buyouts. Clearly, that hasn't moved forward as, as we had hoped in a timely manner. We're certainly looking at a number of properties, but that would be up to the council to decide that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Bram.
With Alderman Kennedy's question, maybe I'll take that a step further of making it a circle back to have that discussion of if we want to allocate 500,000, knowing that we have possibly, well, not possibly, over a million dollars being carried over to the, to this budget cycle.
Okay, circle back. Any other questions? Next?
We'll start on page 139. Snow and ice, snow removal and ice control. Basically, in 2017, the major project in that was the completion of our new salt storage facility. And we're also working on some technologies to increase the efficiency of our operations and the way the salt works. For 2018, the major item, the increase is in 5016 parts and materials. We're up $25,000, and that is to purchase a skid-mounted anti-icing unit. So it's basically a tank with a spray bar that we can mount in an existing truck to apply anti-icing before the storms hit. Any questions on snow and ice?
What's in the tank?
Usually the salt brine, which we are purchasing a salt brine machine also this coming year.
Okay.
We'll be mixing our own salt brine.
Fantastic. Other questions? Alderman Dunn.
Just to follow up to that, so this is the first year we're utilizing that method?
We currently use different chemicals, magnesium chloride, but we're going to be starting to go more towards a salt brine. It basically extends our life a little bit. It lowers the point of the salt melting. You pre-wet it. In one application, the other, you actually spray. You see it on roadways where it looks like strips going down the road, and that, you put down the liquid salt, it dries. So when you start to get a snowfall after that, it actually reactivates the salt and gives us some traction and time before we actually get out and respond. So that will be expanding the technologies into going to that.
Alderman Levin?
And do we do all roads with that, or just certain ones?
We don't have the equipment or the manpower to do all the roads. What we'd probably do is be looking at items like Palmer Underpass through the downtown, or any curves or stop intersections we'd look at first.
Alderman Levin?
I wasn't able to see exactly where the 190,000 capital miscellaneous equipment is. Can you just cover that? Or is that separate from?
That is, yes, that is actually for the salt brine machine. So in our new salt dome, we have overhangs, and we ran power and water out there. So this will be to buy the mixing tank, and then also it's, KEB page 40 is that, that item. So it's all the controls and the mixers to allow that to occur.
Got it? KEB, what number in the KEB?
Page 40.
Page 40 in the KEB, the back of your budget. All the way into. KEB, do you have me, Russ? Alderman Plomsky?
Thank you, Mayor. So with that purchase, will we be seeing savings elsewhere as a result of doing that ourselves?
The main thing I've seen when we've used this before is we see about a 25, or we could see about a 20 to 30% reduction in actual salt usage on an annual basis.
The same results?
Better results, in my opinion.
So we might see?
I haven't seen the council this excited in a while. Okay.
Thanks.
Is that it? Alderman Plomsky? Alderman Bram?
Yes, on page 139, 10-03, I just noticed that in 2016, the actual is 266,000 approximately for full-time. We budgeted 312, estimated at 250, but now we're going back up to 300,000. Are we adding staff? Allocating the budget item somewhere else?
Again, that is just our estimate of overtime for the coming year. We base it on the past seven to 10-year averages, you know, based on our current salary, so it's strictly the overtime costs.
I missed the OT part. Thank you.
Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just procedurally, why does the 190 not trigger a J form thing? Is it because it has a KEB page?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on.
Next account is on page 141. It's the forestry account. Some of the items we're doing here in the 3007, tree trimming will be up about $25,000 as the trees are getting larger. And we want to keep within our seven-year cycle. We're actually requesting an increase in 25,000. But under item 3088, diseased tree removal, we're actually reducing that by $25,000 to offset the increased cost there. And I do have our, I know one thing that's asked every year is where we are on our program for both the elm and the ash trees. So for the elm trees, in 2017, we removed 37 public elm trees. We have 1,368 remaining elm trees in our rights-of-way. We removed 54 private elm trees. We removed in the city. As far as ash trees, we removed in the public right-of-way 131, and we have 502 remaining. And out of those ash trees, we did do 498 of those in-house with our own crews. So a majority of them were done in-house.
So I know the ash trees are a lost cause. What about the elms? Is there any way to?
We do inspect those every year. We're finding with the elm and with the remaining ashes, they're not declining as fast as we originally thought they were. That's why we're kind of delaying the number we're doing every year, as long as they're still structurally sound.
Is the, is the elm's Dutch elm disease, or is it something else?
Dutch elm disease still.
And is that anything that can ever be cured, or? I mean, I know that once an ash tree, you can just watch it. Once it's been invaded, it's, it's done.
And I think what's happening with the elms is a lot of it is spread by the actual roots of the elms themselves. So as you start taking more of the diseased ones down, the elms we have remaining are farther apart from other elms, so they're not in close contact with them. So it is slowing the spread.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. And yes, Director Howard, I kill you, and that was one of my questions in regards to where we are with elm, as well as the ash borer. And you also answered my subsequent question on that in regards to, should we accelerate, accelerate the program? But it sounds like where we're at is a good, good pace to keep and keep moving forward. This is the one that I meant to ask in regards to staffing. The budget for this current fiscal year was 740. We hit about 644, but we're going back up to 708 for projected, which is still what's under the budgeted amount. So are we less one full-time employee? Or why, why are we even less than the previous year's budgeted amount?
Just through attrition, we've had some turnover, and it's time to fill the positions. And getting rid of a long-term employee. And getting rid of a long-term employee and bringing in a first-year, you know, a 35-year employee and bringing in the salary of a first-year employee.
Okay. The next question is on 30-07, which I understand there's a J form, but I just wanted to kinda touch on the tree trimming. The comment on the J form on page 143 makes a comment of the work is required to maintain the Parkway seven-year trimming cycle. But the comment before that is this increase in proposed budget is due to the anticipated trimming of larger trees and an increased number of trees. So does that mean that right now we're not on a seven-year cycle, and we're trying to get there? Or... Because the phrasing sounds to me that we're not on a seven-year cycle, and by increasing the budget, we're gonna put ourselves on a seven-year cycle.
No, we're currently on a seven-year cycle. The ones we're coming into are the areas... We have the areas broken up into seven different divisions for the tree trimming. We're coming back to the areas now that have the older, more mature, larger trees. So the individual tree work to be done, and each tree is increasing. So just to maintain our seven-year cycle.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, let's move on.
Electrical, page 144. One of the major increases is we have a $25,000 increase, and that is because... Let me find it here. What we're doing is a lot of our steel poles on both North Avenue, York, and along Lake Street, we did find that we were starting to get some corrosion from the inside. So we're increasing the budget to do more corrosion testing to make sure the lights themselves are structurally sound.
What line item is that, Mr. Killian?
I'm looking to see which... That is 3098.
Okay. So is that testing and replacement?
No, that is strictly the testing. We do have replacement poles also scheduled as needed through our routine programs.
Okay. Questions? Okay, let's move on.
Next one, we're on rubbish, which is page 147. And this is kind of basically a guess this year. We are right now on our RFP-RFQ. They're due a week from Friday back, so we will be entering as of the coming year into a new five-year refuge contract. So those numbers are kinda just our best guess right now at this time where we'll be with those items.
Questions? Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one of the things I think we talked about last year, and it's kinda coming up again this year with what seems to be a change in the weather pattern. Maybe it's not scientific, maybe it is, but the observation of the temperature staying warmer later into the fall, which is leading to us still having leaves on trees past the time that the leaf pickups are scheduled. Has city staff, like, taken a look at an adjustment to that schedule to address that concern? Because I know we wanna get the leaves out of the street. So I think it's in our interest to wanna collect it once the leaves have actually fallen.
This year, we did delay the last pickup to the first full week of December. So it'll be on the 6th, 7th, and 8th, I think, will be the actual leaf pickup. Last year was the last week of November. So we tried to push it back by one week this year.
Great.
And it's something we have to keep open. The current contract pretty much ends the regular leaf collection at the end of November. So that's one thing we're looking at to see where we are. We also pushed back the early one, if you recall, because the first one last year was before any leaves had even fallen.
Great.
Pushed that back also.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Move on.
Building maintenance, which is on page 148. You will see an increase in line item 1002, which is part-time salaries. And looking at the work that these building maintenance crews are doing, we've taken on the three or four decks over the last couple of years. We, you know, Larch, Addison, and Han Street. And we're just not able to keep up with our current staffing for cleaning the stairwells, the debris in the corners, those items. So we're requesting two part-time employees to basically just go around and keep those decks clean on a daily basis to hit them off. We're trying to do it with one employee right now, and we just can't keep up with... It's basically less than once a week we're able to get to a deck right now with one employee.
Okay. Any questions? Next?
Fleet, we're on page 149. I'm sorry. Page 150, central equipment maintenance. The main items we did this year, again, is to continue to push to look at green vehicles. We did add three hybrid aerial trucks to the system. So those are in the forestry department. When they get on the scene and start using the aerial truck, the aerial portion, the main engine shuts off and it runs on batteries. So those are considered hybrid, which we did receive some grants for the extra cost. And we're just finishing up now converting the 14 public works vehicles over to propane, and the filling station will be installed there shortly. So those are just some of the things we're looking at greening of the fleet as we can in the central equipment maintenance. And other than that, it's just a routine line items for maintenance repairs.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you, yes. On page 150, and you already touched on it, but I wanna kinda dive in a little bit deeper. Line item 4018, which is diesel fuel, and then 4074 is the compressed natural gas. I know we're just moving to the whole propane with those 14 vehicles, but I guess I'm interested in why on line 4018 that we're projecting 200,000 for diesel fuel? If we're converting 14 vehicles to propane, wouldn't we see that be, at the very most, the 150 that's estimated for this year and see the compressed natural gas higher than the 6,000? Or am I reading into it incorrectly?
There's a couple of things there. The vehicles that are dual-use propane, actually are propane gasoline, not propane diesel. So if you look on the 4019 item, we are looking at a decrease of a budget of 300,000 down to 250,000.
Gotcha.
And the reason the natural gas numbers are so high is that's actually the cost of the... Our share of the conversion and the supplying of the tank out there. So that's the upfront work to convert the 14 vehicles over, which we did receive grant money for. So we're only looking to be spending about the $6,000 on actual propane for next year.
Well, that's a huge savings, then. If I'm reading into it right, if we hit what's projected, right? 6,000 for the natural gas and going from 300 down to 250,000 for gasoline.
Correct.
Kudos is what I say to that. That's a huge improvement from a fiscal perspective, but also from a sustainability and green perspective.
Any other comments? None? Let's move on.
Public benefits, page 152. This has several, I guess, of the large, more of the big-ticket items in this year's budget. If you look under... We also will refer to the KEBs. We have the money for 8022, which is our ditch maintenance. We have about $100,000, and that's to maintain all of our ditches that we have throughout the city, more down by the public works building in that region, and then up in industrial park. And then also, we're proposing to start updating our wayfinding signs for the downtown. The signs that, you know, say parking or Wilder Park or those items, they've been up for a length of time and are starting to show some wear and tear. So we're gonna be working with Cassandra and maybe updating the look of them a little bit, but then starting to replace some of those signs themselves.
What line item was that?
That is on 8022. The KEB is page 52 for that. And that's a project that's half-funded in the general fund and half-funded in TIF 1.
If you go to the summary sheets in the KEB, page 6, that gives you an overview of all of them along with the five-year expenditure. It's page 6.
The next item we have under building improvements is the 8023, $1.4 million. That is the KEB page 50. That is the start of the metro station design project. We've recently been awarded, I believe we're up to $12.4 million in funding that we've been earmarked for that project, that we've applied for. So staff continues to work on additional funding, but this will be the, basically, the start of the Phase 2 and the construction drawings for those items. Street improvements, 8025. These items here are some of our ones that are budgeted. We've had scheduled out, but are starting to look at bigger picture items that still need to be discussed and decided upon by the city council. But it is the Phase 1 for both the Route 83 pedestrian bridge, which has been preliminary discussed, but we're bringing forward, and that'll be something that'll be discussed. If you recall, that's the request for a pedestrian bridge between North Avenue and Lake Street, somewhere in that range, to get bikers and runners safely from the east side to the west side to the trail system. And we also have the first phasing of the York and Prairie Path underpass, which I believe PAS is considering some alternatives shortly on that one. And then the last one we have in that item is Larch Street bike parking. We were able to receive a grant from the CMAC grant for some covered bike parking, which we are proposing to put immediately adjacent to the large deck. So there's a little grass area between the sidewalk and the building where we have the pay stations we were able to obtain. We went in on a joint application with about seven other communities for bike rack funding, and we're able to... We're looking at a covered facility for bike racks there. It was STP funding, yes, that's correct.
And if I could add to something that Howard mentioned, the Route 83 improvements. We also supported the county in obtaining a CMAP, a local technical assistance grant, to do some planning up and down the 83 corridor. And so they were able to get that grant, so they'll be doing some corridor planning. And of course, our idea was we should support that because we wanna see the improvements, and it's good for all. So we'll be working with them. That'll play into the possible improvements as well. We made them aware of that as we were putting... As they were putting that grant together.
Okay, great.
Alderman Bram?
Yeah, I'd like to make 8025 a circle back. I know that it's a piece of the 8025, but the York and Prairie Path underpass, it's been budgeted for many years now. We have not moved forward, and my recollection is that as the Public Works Committee, we were pursuing a realignment, if you will, of streets or intersections versus spending the, I don't remember now, over a million dollars, if not more, for the underpass. So if I can request as part of this circle back for, I guess, two out of three items, the Route 83 bridge as well as the York Prairie underpass, if I can receive, or we can receive, some summary of where both of those are and a history and a summary of where both of those items are to date, and if we need to include it in the fiscal budget for this year.
The... Do you have what Alderman Bram has requested? Alderman Levin?
Just for, I guess, clarification, but the York underpass is in front of public safety. So we've been looking at... We at Public Works have discussed it on multiple occasions. So I do know that you guys have spoken about it as well. I don't know what the differences of discussions have been, but I know that we have spoken at least on two, if not more, occasions. So I appreciate that, Alderman Levin.
Two, I think we trumped it. I think we did it three, so probably ahead.
Clarification on that. City Manager Robowski, also, who's winning?
Right.
Which committee?
I can tell you.
I think we're all losing in this one. Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is kind of a general public work question, but I wanted to ask before we moved off of the topic of public works in general. And in reference, kind of, to the KEB, but also to the, kind of, the operating budget component, I haven't... I didn't see anywhere, Howard or Jim, any budget, and there very well might be a good reason, but any budget related to anything that might fall onto Elmhurst, related to this whole 294 huge mega project. And I'm just wondering if that's because we anticipate nothing that we will have to do with that, or it's too early to know what our responsibility might be? Just 'cause I've gotta believe that even, like, some side reconstruction or some things might fall on us eventually, once this thing starts happening. If you could just quickly address that.
Sure. So this is the... I assume you're referring to the exit ramp specifically at County Line Road.
I would think that that part of the project would be the most where there may be some overlap with us.
Sure. And so there's really two projects going on right now with 294, with the tollway that affect Elmhurst. The first is the ramp, which we've been working on for a number of years. The second one is the widening of 294. And Mayor and I met with the tollway officials last week to get an update on that, and we'll be bringing them in shortly so that they can give the council an update. And so we were working on the ramp, and everything was going along fine. And in that part, as we were going through the Phase 1 of the project, we split some costs with the city of Northlake. We... The two of us applied for a grant through the West Suburban Mayors and Managers Group, and we're able to get some dollars for Phase 1. The 20% match, we split with Northlake, and so that is done. And so we are not paying for that any longer. We've now entered Phase 2, and the funding for the project, which this has been part of the Elgin-O'Hare extension, they tied it in with that, which was a billion-dollar project. They were able to fund most of it through that project. And then we applied for, actually, Cook County, because technically County Line Road is under Cook County jurisdiction. Cook County applied for a tighter grant and was able to obtain that to fund the gap between what the tollway was gonna pay and what the expense of the project was. So the money is sitting and waiting for us to move forward. It is in design for Phase 2. They are... They're pretty well-done with the design on the south end. We have been working with one of the local businesses on the north end, and as I said before, things were going along fine. And then the tollway announced the widening of 294, and that changed the design. And so we had to go back to that local business to talk to them, and we're still in those discussions. So we are not... The short answer is we are not on the hook for any of the funding for that, for that or the widening, unless there... It's a possibility if there's some utilities that need to be moved that are ours, we may have to put in for that, but I don't know that we have any there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, let's go. I think we completed the public benefits, right?
I believe so, yes.
All right.
And that is... We have that as a circle back. So next is motor fuel tax. Page 194. Actually, 195. 196. So... Or 197, excuse me. So you see Motor Fuel Tax Fund, that's the dollars that we get from the state annually, and it varies according to state allocation. We use the Illinois Municipal League forecasting model or forecasting numbers to come up with our budget number, and we can use that for a number of items. We choose to use it for salaries and wages, because that is probably the most consistent for us. You can also use it to buy salt and, I believe, pave roads. But we choose to fund some of our salaries and benefits with that. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Alderman Plomsky?
I have a question, and I was only helped by Alderman Dunn to be able to ask this. So a couple items back, we looked at snow removal, and there was a budget line item with $1,000 for salt. And then this says that salt can fall underneath motor fuel tax. How is that divided up? That there's $1,000 in an older budget item, but then...
The main amount of our road salt is purchased through the motor fuel tax funds. The $1,000 that we have in the other budget is more of our safety salt. So it's more of your fine granulars that we use on the concrete walks or more that you actually will buy in bags.
Okay.
Like, so it's a different material that doesn't qualify for the large state purchases.
Got it. Thank you.
Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I've already started talking with Finance Director Trezine, but... So I've already started talking with Finance Director Trazin, but I, I think, and we're going to look at it, and he's going to do a little bit of work, but the funding has been relatively consistent over the past few years, and I'm just kind of curious if we can't find some more qualified expenses, because it seems to me that we're carrying a really large fund balance there, and we could utilize the fund balance to actually make expenditures. Leaving it, leave it where we have fund balance, I'm not saying we need to spend down to zero, but allocate a few more dollars into the general fund if there are expenses that we could, and that it alleviate, you know, some general, general fund expenses too. So I'd like to look into that as a circle back item as well.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All right, let's move on.
So we'll be starting the municipal utility fund, starting on page, virtually it starts on page two hundred with some of the overall charts and balances. We will begin, though, with, on page two oh nine, this is the water administration portion. And again, the municipal utility fund basically covers all of our water production, our, our storage, our pumping of it, our metering, and then on the other end of the system, the wastewater collection, the mains, the lift stations, and the treatment plant itself. So been a lot of talk, and you've seen a lot of different grants and planning going on with these items, so we'll just go ahead and start. The production and treatment, the main things we're looking at in, in that one this year is basically the meter changeout program, which is beginning, Paul, probably December was when, December is when we'll be starting the, the citywide meter changeout program. One of the things that we also have that we're working on now that'll be finished up is, we basically have completed a engineering study of our entire water system, so not just the pipes and the hydrants and the valves, but also the needs for all of our buildings, pump stations, our pump replacement, the towers. So that'll be coming out shortly, but that'll actually forecast out for, I believe, a twenty or twenty-year look to see what our water system's going to take to keep it on par, instead of just looking at straight mains. It's actually taking into consideration the motor controls, condition of the buildings and those items. So that's a, a rather large study that we're in the middle of, or getting near the end at this point. Any questions on water administration before we...
Don't see any.
The next major item is the water distribution, which begins on page two thirteen. And a lot of the increases here are directly related, if you look at the overall budget to projected, we're actually down slightly, which is good, we're keeping our costs in line, but a lot of our major projects, on CEB page fifty-six is our water main replacement program, which, again, we're bumping it up slightly, will be at sixty-three hundred feet. And one thing that we're using the water system evaluation for is to better choose which water mains to replace, and based on age and breaks, and where we need the pressures in the system for that item. A new CEB we have, page fifty-eight, is actually going through and sandblasting and repainting our fire hydrants. They've been repainted and touched up over the years, that there's, you can't even tell how many layers of paint are on the hydrants right now, so this will be, they go to each one and start sandblasting down to the bare metal, prime and repaint those. CEB fifty-nine is our west tower painting. We'll be looking at that, and then we'll be looking at the north tower in 2019. We had them budgeted this year, and in, do some, some work we had to do, we were able to push those out, and we opened bids on those. We opened bids on those already, and we held the west tank for 2018, and they've agreed to hold the north tank into 2019, so we've had those, actually bid out already, the two tanks. CEB number sixty, we're doing some work on the south and the west reservoir roofs themselves. They need some major work going on there. CEB sixty-one is the, the water meter project, and then we also have some increases in our communications equipment, and then also for some of our, our discharge permits, that some engineering that we need to move forward on with those. So that's pretty much the, the main of the water distribution portion of the budget.
Any questions on water distribution?
If we move on to page two sixteen, this is the wastewater administration. Just like the, we had with the, the water system, one of the things we are doing is that we're doing the engineering, we're updating our feasibility plan of the sanitary sewer system. So not only of the plant itself, which brought forward the, the large twenty-plus million-dollar IEP A loan application that we're looking at, we're now going in the same thing and looking at our lift stations, our pumping stations, the lines themselves, to again, extend out and forecast a, a long-range plan of what that system's going to need. One item under salaries that we're looking at, under the part-time salaries, you will see about a eleven to twelve thousand dollar bump. We're not looking to hire more people. What we're looking to do in the wastewater end is to actually get people, to call them more of an internship, as opposed to just part-time. So instead of just bringing people on to help paint and cut grass, we're actually going to try to bring in people who are a little bit more qualified and actually get them with more knowledge of helping outrun the systems, teach them how to look at pumps, and, and turn it more into an internship program instead of just a, a part-time summer position. And the last item, under memberships, is it, Paul? You'll see there's a, a slight jump in sixty thirty-seven, and what has happened is we're part of the Salt Creek Dupage River work group that helps us with overall planning, with the EPA and several other items. One of the major players is dropping out of that, so this is the increase in the cost to the remaining communities to cover the costs and what it costs to operate that, that whole program. So that's the end of the water admin.
Any question on water admin?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Brennan?
So I'm on two sixteen, line item, engineering thirty twenty-six. So I see that we're estimating about two hundred K under this year. That two hundred K carried forward in that nine oh two? Kind of...
No, there's actually, I think it's going to be thousand dollars is all carryover from this year into next, the rest of the work is already being completed. So there's a small amount.
Page two sixteen, what?
But then the nine hundred thousand is all those engineered, those projects?
Yes, that's the actual facility plan and the engineering study, and that number is the number for the engineering in the end.
Got it, yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Bram?
This is more of a general question, because we talked about carryover now twice. I know that we typically get the carryover list at the end of the, or towards the end of the budget cycle. If, if it is prepared or ready, would we be able to get that at, for our next committee of the whole meeting? Because I think that lends into some of the debate of what we should do from a budgetary perspective, and what we should do from a policy perspective. Is that possible, or is there a reason why we do need to wait till the end?
Yeah, that, that is not ready yet, and I'm not sure with the holiday coming up that we'll have that ready for next Monday, I apologize.
Director Trazin's not staying in for the holiday?
I'm letting him get out and visit some family, so I'm sorry, but we, we don't plan to have that for the next one, but we'll get it to you as soon as we can.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Let's move on.
Starting on page two nineteen is the maintenance of the sanitary sewer system. Some of the major items you'll see on there, under the CEB, page number sixty-two, is our heavy, two-point-seven million dollars, heavy sewer line maintenance program, which on a annual basis includes the engineering for several of these projects, but also manhole lining, lining of the sewers. We're looking at T-lining of laterals, flow monitoring and cleaning. Basically, these are a lot of the projects that are related to the IEP A consent order. So if you remember, the consent order we had until the end of 2017 to finish all of our studies, which were online, and those are all pretty much finished up, the reports will be going to the, the EPA. So now we are in the, we're, we're started already, but now this is the heavy phase of actually going through and doing the recommended works through 2021. So you'll see these numbers out for the next several years as we start to do a lot of the recommended work out of that consent order study. One of the, on CEB page sixty-four, this is...
Hey, Howard? One second. I, I see, I mean, I can, that was CEB sixty-two you were talking about, right? Is there, is there a corresponding line item in the...
It actually falls under...
Eighty thirteen?
Eighty thirteen, and then thirty twenty-six and thirty thirty-nine, so there's several line items. But we kind of lumped it together on one CEB because it's all the sanitary line maintenance.
It seems like we've been lining pipes since I've been an elected official. Is there any end in sight?
No. I mean, if you look at the, you know, we were just, as an example...
That is an honest answer.
We were looking at the, the, some of the lines in the central, in the downtown here in a hundred years old, I think. We, we have, you know, sewer lines that are a hundred years old, that are still brick sewers, so, and at a hundred to a hundred and fifty miles of sewers, we'll be, we'll be doing this for a while.
Asked and answered. Alderman Bram?
Yeah, just a question in regards to the CMMS software. I see that it's budgeted for some type of upgrade. The question is, will this upgrade allow us to pretty much document in the software of what sewer systems we've updated? You know, what areas of town, what lengths, what manholes? So we have that all within CMMS? Or is that a different software package? Are we do that like in Excel or something?
Yes, the CMMS program is called Lucidity.
Microphone.
The CMMS system we use is called Lucidity. We're right now populating the database with all the data from GIS, plus the information we're collecting from the field ourselves. Once that program is fully functional, yes, you'll be able to pull up a line segment for a manhole and have the history of what directional the flow is, how deep it is, whether it's been lined, you know, when last time it was inspected. It'll include information like how, when a valve was turned, when a hydrant was flushed, all of that information will be tracked.
Great, because I know in years past, that has been one of our challenges, really having an efficient, as well as I would even go as far as to say accurate, account of where everything is and how old they are. Are they a hundred and fifty years old brick sewers, or is it a wood water main somewhere in the city? So that's great to hear.
Any other comments? Okay, let's move on.
CEB sixty-four, we are looking at the start of a, our emergency sewer overflow. Our new NPDS permit from the EPA requires us to monitor these and look at ways. We have fourteen of them, so this is now the engineering to start to figure out how we're going to get to these locations. Some of them are rather easy, some of them are actually under major intersections, so there's a lot of engineering work that we need to do, and that's for our permit. We also have on page CEB sixty-five, we'll be looking at the engineering for a future project, which is the Lake and Walnut Lift Station rehabilitation. On page CEB sixty-seven, that is the CEB for the atrium lift station rehab, that's just under one-point-four million, but that is funded with an EPA loan. And then we have on page CEB sixty-eight, the north industrial generator, and that's to provide emergency power up at, at that location. Again, that's with an EPA loan. So that is the end of the major items of the maintenance of sewers.
Any questions on that? Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Bram?
Yes, your last statement, Director Killian, in regards on CEB sixty-eight, it looks like from last year to this year, last year there was funds allocated for close to six-hundred thousand, and now we're close to five. I believe it was five eighty-seven last year, down to four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand this year. Is that just by stroke of luck? Are we getting grants? Or why is it a significant, we reducing scope? Why is the reduction?
We had the major, all of the major portions of the engineering has already been completed. So this is just the remaining engineering to actually have the project on place, but we had it designed, and then once it was under design, we realized we could go with the EPA loan for that, so we's held up that project.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on.
Next is page two twenty-two, which is the wastewater treatment plant itself. Virtually, it's hard to look at, but if you go through CEBs, we have engineering for a lot of projects coming up next year. We have engineering for SCADA upgrades, affluent pumps, influence screws, belt replacements, the electrical distribution system, digester cover, so there's just a lot of projects that we'll be starting, engineering for future projects to move forward on. If you look at the CEBs, the upfront engineering, again, with an EPA loan, and then the projects are funded in the next one, two, or three years, up to four years after that process, but we're getting all the engineering done next year. We're starting to work on that. We can better calculate our, or look at our costs for future years. And then some of the major items that we have coming up, actually, construction, this next year, is starting with page CEB seventy-four. We have the first phase of our underground improvements, which is our process line, natural gas lines, communications and electrical conduits down at the plant. If you remember, if you've been down there, most of our gas mains are now above ground. We had to do an emergency replacement of those on a temporary basis above ground until we could get the underground system designed. We also have some lab improvements we're looking to do down at the plant. CEB seventy-six is the first, split into two, but that is the two million dollar, close to two million dollar project to improve the HVAC at Buildings Two and Three down at the plant, with some of the processes and offices that take place in there. There are roof replacements, the start of the, again, the split of the grit removal system, which will remove more of the inorganic material prior to the treatment process. That's on page seventy-eight. Total project is about three-point-two million. Again, these are all eligible for the IEP A loans. And you'll notice a common theme in a wastewater plant is nothing gets done for less than about two to three million dollars these days, so it's Tom's nightmare, I think, at, at this time.
Do we have any cool plans?
We also have a project up at North Avenue, again, that's in East End Park. That lift station up there, in the heavy rains, when we do flood up there, does flood, and then it gets knocked out of service because of the floodwaters. So we do have a project that's already been bid, and we're waiting for the EPA loan approval to come in, but that will basically build a mini flood wall around that structure to keep it from taking floodwater, and we'll be able to continue to operate the, the sanitary sewer system there. And then we also are improving our affluent sampling station, and then on CEB page eighty-one, we are looking to increase the, the size of our storage apron pad where we keep our dried sludge and some of the materials that we bring in from our sewer cleaning, and also our water main breaks to dry out. So again, that is a rather large, you look at capital outlay, you know, just a loan right about nine-point-two million in that fund for next year, so it'll be another exciting year in wastewater.
Any questions? Alderman Levin?
The, I, this is a significant amount of capital expenditure. Is this part of the study to, to group everything that needs to be done and get it scheduled, and then it would taper off after the next, we get through this chunk of funding?
And that's what, you know, we do have some immediate needs, and if you look at the CEBs, we're trying to get the engineering done, and then we are trying to schedule out the next four or five years instead of hitting them all hard. Some of the, like the influence screws, there's three. We do all the engineering upfront in one, you know, this coming year, and then for each year after that, we try to space out, you know, one, one of the screws a year. So we're trying to spread it out, but basically the plant really needs a lot of work to keep it up and running. If you remember, just this last year, we had a digester cover fail where we had to do a two, almost a two million dollar emergency design build to keep it from doing more damage and to get it back up and running, so...
Well, I knew it'd be two million. So, I mean, have we deferred maintenance that has caused a problem, or is, or is this part of the normal?
I'll be able to answer that. Paul's been here two years now?
Year and a half. Yes and no. I mean, the, the basic maintenance is trying to be done on it, but the equipment has outlived its life. its life, and things are just starting to finally wear and tear and fail. The hardest thing we're having trouble with is every time something breaks, there's no replacement parts for it because they don't make it anymore. So that's why we're trying to stay ahead of this before we lose, again, something major like our gas lines or our electric lines. Right now, we, like, as Howard was saying, our gas lines are above ground. Our electrical lines are hanging over tanks that were underground. Because they failed underground, we've had to run new wires. You know, we've had massive pump failures over the last year and a half, just because they have not been replaced for such a long period of time. We're getting long lives out of them, but now they're just coming upon that end of life.
All right. And then my last question is, if we're doing ma, it seems like a lot of major equipment replacement right now, then do we start budgeting so that we don't run into, you know, maybe just too, Alderman here will probably still be here, but will we get to the point where in forty, you know, 20 years, we have to do the same thing? Are we going to start budgeting to build it up as we go along?
That's a, that's a good question. Obviously, we, we take out bonds and loans over a length of time to pay for those under the, the theory that, you know, people, users as we go along should pay for that. It's not, I mean, we can't do it as a lump sum. We just haven't saved those dollars. Whether we budget that in some kind of capital replacement fund, I know that we did attach that to the water bills recently, so we are trying to build that up. But as, as Paul said, and I appreciate the, all the work that Paul has done over the last year and a half in, in identifying all these needs. And we've had a number of conversations between everybody in this stretch of table here as to how we try to defer that out because we, we made the same observation that you did, Alderman, that we, we can't just have all this done at once. And unfortunately, with something like this, the wastewater treatment plant, it's not one of our assets where we can afford to have things fail and, and not, not be working.
Okay, thank you. Woman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to, this isn't a question, just kind of a, a comment, but we had our first initial review of this at committee last, last week. This is one of the most perplexing things, I think, about the finance, being on the Finance Committee is trying to get your arms around this and look long-term enough to fund it properly. You know, if you look, there's $25 million of revenue and $48 million of expenses. And as the city manager said, you know, the, the real trick of it is, is even if we had the $48 million laying around, it's not fair to the people who live here today to put all the $48 million and then other people to benefit as time goes on. So this is something that, since I've been on the Finance Committee, we've really, with the help of city staff and some really good questions by committee members and stuff, we're really starting to try and get a longer-term handle on this, but it's not easy. And so it's just, it's kind of a process. We're getting better, certainly by, you know, the capital investment recovery charge. That, that was a big bonus. We're fortunately starting to see the commodity charges level off or be very reasonable. But we have a lot of work to do, and it's just, it's, it's really, really difficult. But this is going to be a major topic in our next committee meeting is to set the rates for next year. And again, since they're all user fees, when you're taking on $27 million of debt over the next few years, I, you know, their rates are not unfortunately going to go down. It's just not a feasible situation, so...
Woman Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page 223, line item eighty twenty. So, so I'm just trying to get my head around, it looked like we had a budget of 12 million for, for this year, and it looks like we're coming at four. What, what are some of the dependencies that, that would cause that? I mean, is it resources? Is it funding? Waiting for those, those funds to come in? What?
When I started with the organization, I did not know we were going to go to the IEPA loan process. So we started going down the engineering route during discussions. We moved the funding over to the IEPA. That process is about a year process. As of tonight, with the approvals, we'll be submitting our final package finally for packet number one. So we'll hopefully get that first loan offer in late December, January. But we originally started that back in January of last year. So it's that time process of going through the IEPA loan process that pushed some of that back. And then it was rebudgeted for this year. Instead of doing carryovers, we rebudgeted those items now that we had bid prices for them as well.
So, so the nine-two that we're estimating to do this year, those dependencies will clear, we will have our funding and be able to do that work?
Yeah, that's the goal right now, is it's, some of that is still engineering for some newer projects that are going to start engineering in 18 and be built in 19. But the majority of what's in the budget right now will be funded through this loan package number one, which will be the application going in tomorrow. And then once we get that approval, that's what'll fund this project.
Right, thanks.
Which we've already bid.
Yeah, those have already been bid out.
Any other questions? Okay. Parking fund?
Want to talk about revenues, or?
That's page 230. And it says 225, but the, the actual budget starts on 230. As we've taken on more parking decks, of course, expenses go up, including the maintenance of it.
Lards will be constructed in Adelaide.
Okay. So for maintenance each year, we're constantly reviewing one and maintaining one. And when Howard says construction, it's actually the maintenance that needs to be done, whether it's caulking or structural repairs or anything like that, we're constantly, so we're in a four-year cycle for that, to, to accomplish that. And then I think the, the big expenditure, and Alderman Mulliner touched on it earlier, is the screening for the Schiller deck. Most of you know, I think everybody knows, our police vehicles are stored on the ground floor, and we have doors that are, are open and closed with electric passes. Where our concern is, is the, the walk between the deck and the Sally Port, the back door of the police station, leaves the officers exposed a little bit. And while nothing has happened, we don't want to take that chance. And so what we're looking at is some screening that would be put on the south side of that deck to prevent that from happening, as, as best we can. We, we can't put up a solid wall, is my understanding. And so Howard and his crews have been looking at a number of options because you have to take into account wind load and, and all kinds of things with that. So, and of course, we want it to be aesthetically pleasing as you drive down the street. And so we'll be looking at, at further and moving that project forward. Oh, and then on the Addison deck, we are looking at some railing on the very top. I think we have something similar on the Schiller deck. So we will be designing that and installing that around the edges of the Addison deck.
Okay, any questions? Woman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Howard, if you could please just give a little bit more color to the, to a form for the item C on page 232. I, I understand the explanation that I, I heard the explanation in that the increase was due to the addition of two new decks. But I guess I would have expected then to have seen that increase in the maintenance number to continue. And it, it's, it's really swinging quite a bit over the past five years, including, like, looking into 2019. So if you could maybe just delve a little deeper for me on that, please?
Sure. Some of the things we're looking at is, when you look, sorry. A large of it was the Addison deck, which again is the seven layers, and then also the little bit of the Han Street. Major items in there are sprinkler systems that were maintained in both these structures because you have, on the Han Street, you know, it is below residential, so it's a, a wet sprinkler system. And then also in Addison by the, the commercial. We're also having issues, honestly, with the elevators at the Addison deck. The main reason is they're electronic, they're proprietary inf, systems, and we are constantly getting kids who have fun jumping up and down and tripping them. So virtually, we're probably calling the elevator emergency service out there several times a week, especially in the summer months, to keep resetting the elevator. So those costs are greatly increasing. Again, a lot of it is just routine maintenance that we're keeping up on. Oh, is a screening in that one? Yeah. So the actual screening, I'm sorry, of the Addison, of the Schiller deck, is, is the 375,000 is also in that count.
And that's a one-time expense?
Right, that's a one-time.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't, I didn't realize that that was, that expense was in the maintenance line item.
Any other questions?
Understood, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to the tax increment financing funds. Page 239 is the, the beginning of the...
Page 239?
Page 239 is where I'm at for TIF one.
Time check, Mr. Grabowski. We've got 15 minutes. I believe last year, we actually, we had one or two line items that bled into our circle-back meeting, so just reminding you.
Thank you. So as we look at this, two, two line items that I'll point out, other expenses, 6098, that is for potential property purchases within the downtown TIF. And 9817, that is a transfer from TIF to the parking fund to pay the bond issue, the debt on the Addison deck. I would add that the committee, TIF expires in 2021, and the DPZ committee is looking at that, and I know that they're discussing all of the TIFs, this one in particular.
Any questions? Woman Bram?
Yeah, this is more of a general question. I know we're wrapping up, or maybe we have wrapped up in regards to streetscaping in the downtown TIF. I don't know if there's much left to do. Obviously, purchasing property is, is a big-ticket item. But are there any other big-ticket items as we're coming to a close? I mean, it sounds kind of funny to say coming to a close when we're at, going into 2018, we still have three years left on this TIF. But are, since we have a balance of, projected of over $4 million, are there any other big-ticket items?
We, we're also studying the, the parking area in between all the buildings, commonly called the donut hole. And so we're not sure what, what might lead to that as an item. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there's always redevelopment property purchases to make and, and try to amass.
Thank you. Any other questions? On the TIF two?
TIF two, there's no expenditure because that has ended. So if you have any questions, happy to answer that.
TIF three?
TIF three, we do have other public, line item, I'm sorry, that's page 249, line item eighty twenty-six, other public improvements. Those are some projects that we're looking at in the, the TIF three area as far as possible sidewalk or bike path or paving improvements for that area.
Any questions? No questions.
TIF four, page 254. In that one, we, we generally have costs associated with any redevelopment agreements that are out there. We are always looking at that as, as an option. We have more money in the account, as you can see, really, so it's tough to schedule out any projects. Certainly in the KEB, we have some, or in the KEB, we have some projects looking forward, but mostly are, are tied to redevelopment agreements now.
Woman Bram?
Thank you. On page 252, where it's a summary of revenue and expenditures, it's getting late, I'm starting to stumble on words here. For property taxes, 745,000 proposed for 2018. I don't know if you have to list every single one of them, but we have, I would say significant redevelopment in the area with the car dealerships, with LA Fitness, with Mariano's for a few years now. Where does the increase in the property taxes come from? What properties? Does it include LA Fitness at this point because it's in arrears? Obviously, it includes Mariano's. It probably doesn't include any of the car dealerships.
Would it include Elmhurst 255?
That's what we were just talking about.
That's correct. So we, we anticipate some rolling on for 255. A little bit for the Paragon, the LA Fitness development, and a little bit for the Wilkins Mazda.
So then for 2019, the bump up for that is all the car dealerships would be on there? The rest of the little bit for Paragon will be on there?
And mostly 255.
Okay, great. The only other question I have in regards to this, and, and I'm trying to read through the line of credit. Where are we on the line of credit? What was the initial line of credit? How much do we owe? It looks like on that same page, 252, we're making a $200,000 payment towards the line of credit. Am I reading that correctly for 2018? And then a larger payment of 800,000. Do we owe 1.2 as of, we sit here today?
As we sit here today, we actually owe $5 million.
Oh, a little bit off.
So we, we actually just, we extended the line of credit, renewed it, and bumped it from 5 million to the seven and a half million. But 5 million is allocated currently that we've drawn alt to TIF four. And most of that is for the 255 project.
Most being 255, and then probably a little bit for Mariano's, the 1. whatever, 2.5 or whatever. I don't remember now what we paid there.
Correct.
And then is LA Fitness in there as well?
LA Fitness was all pay-as-you-go.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is that it for TIF four? Sorry, that's right. Woman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. So back to TIF four. The streetscape improvement project is something that was, you know, something we talked about a year, year and a half ago or something like that. I think it's an important project, and I know we're struggling with funds, but, and we're only looking at 2018, 19. I think that's a really critical part, and I know that, you know, we, we did it with TIF one. We've borrowed money before to make improvements and things like that. Is that something that we have considered or we might consider? I, I think it's really, really important.
So that's a project where we've applied for grant funding and been turned down, and our hope was to apply again to try to, to get some funding. That's an ITEP-eligible program.
It's been here for a week.
No, the streetscape. So we, we intend to apply again. We all agree that it's an important project for the area. It could really change the look of the area. And there has been some conversation over what happens if we don't get grant funding? Where does it fall into the priorities? So as we go through that, I would ask that we apply for this grant funding round to see what we can get, and then come back and take a look at that.
So why did we, why did we fail on the funding request? Why did we fail on the grant request? Do we have a remedy for it, or are we just kind of getting back in line again?
We're getting back in line to a certain extent. It is not necessarily a failure as it is the strength of the other projects that are in there. So I don't know if we changed.
We have a change, the ITEP covers all. The ITEP grants are basically transportation... The I T E P grants are basically transportation enhancement funds. So it can be museums that related to transportation, beautification projects, bikeways, there's just a lot of different values. So it's just where, you know, which projects are, are looking forward. And we are asking for a lot of money on this project, so that's also.
What's the dollar amount that we're asking for? Is it five millions?
I think we're looking at about two million at least for that.
If I can add though, as far as TIF four goes, another priority of the TIF is sidewalks on the north end. And so what we've been trying to do is, is look at any funding that we might have remaining from the sidewalk program to fill in some of the gaps as we move north. So we, we are mindful of that and appreciate if the council wants to re-prioritize that and look to bond for that. We, you know, the, the E A V issue up there right now that we're not generating, as Alderman Bram pointed out, not everything's rolled onto the books yet to generate that E A V.
Okay, thank you. TIF five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Can I follow up on Alderman?
Sure, absolutely.
So in regards to that, and thank you, Alderman New York, for bringing that up, I asked about this in our Public Works Committee on where it's at. I guess I would like to know, and I'm not asking for a circle back, is, are we competing against ourselves for these I T E P funds? You know, what were our submittals last year along with the streetscaping, the York street, streetscaping projects? And, you know, do we look at it holistically from a standpoint of, here's the Elmhurst projects that we're submitting for X, Y, and Z grants? I believe we did get grants last year for I T E P, from I T E P. I don't remember if I'm right or not or what projects it was, but, so that's one question. The other question I'll throw out there is the York and Grand intersection improvements as well, which is the entrance for, well, heading south into Elmhurst, the north entrance. Where are we with that project as well, if you can speak to that?
Um, we, we have that discussion each year about grants and what do we apply for, as you said, to make sure that we're not competing with ourselves. In some cases, you can do that, in other cases, not feasible. That, that was our only I T E P grant when we applied for it. We did not, I don't think we received an I T E P last year. I think we received some T C M dollars for some sidewalk improvements. And because I was listening to that, I didn't hear the second part of your question and I apologize for that.
No problem. I was just asking also, on the priority list, we talked about York and Grand, that intersection, improving the left turn lane as well as beautification overall. I'm just inquiring on where that is on the priority list. Will we be applying for grants for that, et cetera?
So York and Grand would most likely have been a grant for T C M dollars, S T P dollars, correct? And I don't know that we've applied for that, again, trying to prioritize roadways that we can apply for. And then you, I think we've put some information out from DuPage Mayor Managers about the changes that happened to the S T P program after this year. C map renegotiated the agreement that they had with Chicago. And as a result, it looks like there's going to be a three-year freeze on dollars for paving projects. The way C map looked at the program and it was handed down from the, the Federal Department of Transportation, they wanted those dollars to go towards more regional project versus more local paving projects. And so for the next three years, we don't anticipate much funding coming through that. Doesn't mean we won't look at other grant sources, but as far as the, the S T P dollars go, that looks like it's going to be a little light.
So it's fair to say that it's not on the priority horizon at this point?
Well, and not in the sense of grants for paving, but that is part of the TIF. And so the question is, where does that balance against the gateway at two ninety for dollars? And as I mentioned to Alderman New York, as E A V continues to climb, of course, we'll get more increment in and we'll be able to do projects like that. Doesn't stop us from looking at a bond issue possibly, and so I think we can talk more about that in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions for TIF four? City manager, can you wrap up TIF five in two minutes?
Uh, I think we can. That's page two sixty. You see a couple of big numbers stand out there and it relates to actions that the council took earlier tonight. The twenty eighteen, I'm sorry, page two sixty, line eighty-twenty-six, other public improvements. That is squarely for the B M W project. The one point five million is land acquisition, which is our commitment in the R D A that we approved tonight.
Okay, any questions on TIF five? Still pretty fresh in all our memories. I think we all know what it's there for and what's happened so far. All right, seeing no other questions on TIF five, I think that wraps up TIFs. We gave it the old college try city manager, we got to stormwater funds, and we will not be tackling that tonight.
Understood.
Appreciate that. Howard, you look.
I could do it.
No.
We're gonna hold up.
No, we can't.
No. Yeah, we can't.
We can't.
We're gonna go, we're gonna hold that, so we're gonna do circle backs plus the remaining four items. Four items and then the circle backs for next time. If there's any circle backs within those four items, we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Dunn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned.